Evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call together the March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting. We do have a forum. Stacy's here in person with me. Janine's virtual. Feenel's gonna be coming in a few minutes late and Elaine is away. So if you would, for those of us that are here, if you would rise and join me. Applause allegiance. Applause allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic, strength of the nation, every government, every role, everybody, members, from home. Thank you. This evening, we have the consent agenda votes here, which contains the minutes from the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting as opposed to oath of bills and payroll. And give a chance to look this over. Great. Anticipating no comments. Is there a motion to accept? I will second that to make things easy. This will be a roll call vote since we have one member virtual. Stacy?
Stacy, yes.
Janine?
Janine, yes.
I heard you. See if we can get the volume up a little higher next time.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, as well. This is our first opportunity for interested citizens. So if there's anybody with us this evening at home or present. My latest speak for the school committee?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none. Well, move into our recognition portion of the evening. I would like to invite Raquel Rodriguez to share the various school reports.
Good evening. So for Shaker Lane, Shaker Lane launched their reading challenge for students today during, a few days ago, during their community meeting. Their goal is series six, giving it seven hundred hours of reading for being at home. And they plan to earn a new school dance party. For Russell Street, MCAS assessments begin begin next week for all the students and then congratulations to Miss McGregor, Miss Hemis. This was, sorry if I mispronounced that. Emma McHenry for receiving LEF grants and these grants help support all great things where teachers are playing for the students. For the middle school, their MCAS annualization is in two weeks. And then for the high school, the unified bowling team got first place in the term tournament this past weekend. So congratulations to them. Six students attended the Bulldog Model UN Conference this past week in Bedford, New Hampshire with Olivia Franco and Aria Watch Sundar, a freshman junior. Awarded best delegate and then gave this Thomas and Brianna LaBresty, both sophomores were awarded the verbal commendation award. So congrats to all of them who participated. And then finally, next weekend, LHS Drama's production will be legally won. We'll be going on there at the weekend. So make sure to get your tickets.
Yeah, it's great so much. A couple other points of recognition. I'll turn it over to business manager Steve Martin to speak about the Green Community Grant.
Yes, so we're happy to announce that the town received a grant through the green communities. It's a total award to the town is a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. Um, hold on, I have a breakdown. Um, of the hundred and seventy three thousand awarded to the town, a hundred and eight thousand, one seventy five. Are is delegated for school projects and you can see the projects on the screen. Um, LED lighting, uh, we're gonna start replacing some light fixtures in some of the classrooms and convert them from fluorescent to LED. And then some weather stripping at the high school and the middle school. So it's a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars a project cost, um, of which a hundred and eight thousand is covered by the grant. Five thousand, three hundred and sixty three is covered by utility incentives. And then the school is contributing a little over twenty thousand dollars to the project. So we're getting a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars worth for twenty thousand dollars. So I think that's pretty good. So I just wanna thank Diane Dickerson on the town side and Dave Riley, our school energy manager, that have been working diligently on the application and getting all the project lined up. And we're just waiting for state approval as far as when we can actually start the actual work. Uh, once we get that green light, then we have the contractor all lined up, ready to go and we'll start that those projects. So that's good to know. Uh, the other uh, um, recognition is we received a donation uh, in the amount of thirteen hundred and ninety dollars uh, from uh, Takata Pharmaceuticals. This is something Valerie Affinity uh, put together and requested. And we're happy to get that. And I think we're gonna hear about the STEM program in a little while from Valerie. So um, that uh, that one is a gift. It's not over five thousand dollars. So school committee does not need to accept it with a vote, but we'd just like to make school committee aware that we received that. So thank you, Valerie, for all the work in getting that donation.
I'll be the check in the packet. Love it.
Yep, thank you.
Good stuff. Uh, Superintendent Clancy, any other recognition?
Yeah, I have a couple. Rotary supports a leadership experience for sophomore students every year. It's called Ryla. Last week, I had the pleasure of interviewing eighteen students with the rest of, some representatives from Rotary. Uh, we were able to send twelve. Uh, the interview committee was just blown away with the talent of the eighteen students who brought in. The depth of what they're doing, the course loads and the contributions to the community and their uh, talent that they bring to the table. They already know where they wanna go in college and it was it was really a great experience. It is every year. This is probably the toughest year we've had. It's like twelve out of eighteen students. For me, it was a very proud moment as superintendent. The interview team was just blown away by by our sophomore students who came in for interviews. Just like to thank our students who applied and looking forward to hear from the twelve students who attend the leadership summit in the summertime. We've had for the first time in our district, uh, grade two students participated in an MPY poster contest, Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. Usually we have high school involvement. They submitted a poster. Uh, it was titled, We Care for Our Community. And there's a press release in your package that covers the whole experience. I'd like to thank Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Scar and our grade two students who wanted to part in that poster contest.
That's awesome.
Perfect. Thank you. And the last one is, and I'm thrilled that we have some students from my LHS tonight talking about their high school science project or STEM projects. They've done very well in competition and a number of them are going to state. So looking forward to hearing their presentation soon. And that's it.
Great. Thanks so much. All right, we have uh, four presentations scheduled for this evening. So we'll move into those. I did would like to announce that um, the third item listed, which is the superintendent's um, evaluation process was gonna be a joint presentation with Superintendent Clancy and Elaine. Elaine's not able to join us this evening. So if it's all right with uh, Stacy and Janine, what I'd like to do is just move that to next meeting. Um, which would be April tenth. We only have one school committee meeting in April due to April vacation. However, we do have a school committee meeting early May, which will take place before uh, town elections for any turnover on the board. So the five of us will get to perform the evaluation. So if that's all right with you guys. We'll make that official. Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you, Janine. I can hear you perfectly now.
Yes.
All right. So first up, we've got the Regional Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair Competition. Which is Leah that's with us?
Yes.
I wasn't sure if anybody was hiding the phone. Uh, podium. So Leah Pratt will present the project from the Regional Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair Competition. So please join us. Welcome to use your podiums. We can hear you better if you like.
I'm not sure if Valerie Affinity sent a online.
Presentation?
Yeah. Yes, she did.
We have information in the packet. That the one?
Yeah, um, my picture is on the first slide.
That one?
No.
Gone.
The next one. Okay, so this is my group at the regional science fair. And let's go to the next slide. This is our poster and our project was based around climate change. So we studied the effects of climate change on pyrosis, pestipornis, which is a bioluminescent organism that is sort of like an algae. And essentially what our project did was over the span of about four weeks, we had, you can see under methodology, um, the boxes we set up with light fixtures. And we separated the organisms into three flasks um, in each box. So we had a total of nine flasks and then like neutral. And what we did was we put a heating pad meant for red tiles and we set it at the front of each box. And so by putting the flasks at different distances away from heater, we could control temperature. Um, we recorded different temperatures and different pHs in the different flasks to coordinate that with climate change. Um, and our project was relatively successful. Our results were not completely what we expected. We had, if you go on under results and analysis. Um, one of my partners was in charge of this aspect of the project, but I'll do my best to explain it. So you can tell on the graph towards the left that the endpoints, some of them turn way upwards and some way downwards. So we expected that the majority of the organisms were gonna die or just um, not reflect as much light. But some of the organisms had increased light emitted. So that was unexpected. But overall, we did find that with the effects of climate change, pyrosis, pestipornis. The organisms were deceased or the lighting had dramatically decreased. So we did not make it to the state science fair, but we did receive recognition that um, the judges really appreciated our impact in environmental sciences. And they urged us to continue. So our group is going to try again next year. We probably seem to be. So it's very exciting. And yeah, it's our project.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that with us. Give any questions, Stacy?
No, that's great. It seems like you guys, you like to be things to it. So you did do a good job. So appreciate you presenting that. Um, say one critique I got when I was younger was speak loud and proud about your about your project. So that was, that was great. That's really good.
How many hours to focus? Did your group have to put into this project?
Um, it's hard to put a number, but we took USF and STEM research course. So that was a heavily course. So you add up like four hours of that a week and then you would have to take measurements on our own time over weekends and over Christmas break. So quite a few. Um, and we did have some struggles figuring out the methodology of our project. PH is really hard to control and not a lot of issues happen, but it was successful.
Right. Oh, really? You have a long-term interest in pursuing science?
Yeah, we all do.
Thank you. Sharon, Janine, do you have any questions? I'll leave you out.
No, thank you. This looks wonderful.
There you go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Your partners could make it for this lone spokesperson. You know, we get extra credit for that.
They should.
Yeah, we just didn't send the video.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, let me, let me get that.
Thanks, Steve. He's gotta be ready.
Surprises left and right tonight.
One second. Give me one second.
Who we Karen?
All right, that's, yeah, good. This works.
Hello, my name is Maida. I am a junior at Littleton High School and this year I'm researching nutrition and Alzheimer's disease. My project is on analyzing the effect of fenugreek extract with and without turmeric on the longevity of C. elegans. Now, Alzheimer's is a global health issue and what if the key to slowing down Alzheimer's is found in common kitchen spices? Thinking about that got me interested. In my culture, I have seen turmeric and fenugreek be used to treat type two diabetes. When doing more research, I found studies that link type two diabetes and Alzheimer's disease. This got me thinking if fenugreek and turmeric would have an impact on Alzheimer's disease. I I learned that trigonella is the main compound of fenugreek and curcumin is the main compound of turmeric. These compounds have the properties that make turmeric and fenugreek so beneficial. C. elegans have been used to study Alzheimer's disease because they have a short lifespan and can genetically be modified to express mutations. Alzheimer's disease is characterized by amyloid beta plaque and tau tangles in the brain. These disrupt neuronal function, causing cognitive decline. For my research, I wanted to test two things, whether the combination of fenugreek and turmeric would result in a greater improvement in the longevity of C. elegans with the Alzheimer's mutation compared to just fenugreek alone. I also wanted to test how would the population rate decline in C. elegans with the Alzheimer's mutation compared to the control strain? And whether the fenugreek and turmeric extracts would slow down this decline over a five day period. So I attempted my methodology four times before getting a successful outcome. Throughout my four attempts, I made sure to identify certain methodologies and certain steps throughout my attempts that I could possibly change each time that could reduce the
If we get that fixed.
I don't know. Let me see if this works.
Really interested in this.
We need to get it back. Almost doesn't happen there when you present in person, you know? You're not gonna freeze at the podium. That's true.
Or getting a successful outcome. Throughout my four attempts, I made sure to identify certain methodologies and certain steps throughout my attempts that I could possibly change each time that could reduce the
Do you think that's more than work?
No. Worked in the office. No, sorry.
No, no worries. Why don't we make the rest? Yeah, it's in the packet. There's a link. Do we have a link in the packet for it?
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No, there's no link in the packet, but I can send.
Yeah, let's get the link. And that was made up? Great. We lost a cliffhanger there. Okay, um, that, just checking with everybody. That wraps it up. Um, that portion of the presentation. Okay. All right, next up, uh, presentation number two for the evening. It's the um, year three special education program review. Director of Student Services. Will give an update of the program review. Welcome to the cell.
That's the best it gets right now.
Well, that's fine. Um, so tonight I'm gonna present on the special education program evaluation that was conducted this year. Before I start, I would like to extend a big thank you to everyone who contributed to um, the program about in this part. The participation included interviews, surveys, observations and planning sessions and um, those contributions were invaluable in helping us assess and improve our programs to better support the needs of our students. The insights and feedback that everyone shared will play a key role in continuing to shape our special education services, ensuring that we continue to provide inclusive and effective learning environment for all students. So I want to recognize the commitment it takes to engage in such a thorough evaluation. And I really appreciate everyone's collaboration and professionalism throughout the entire process. Next slide. Okay, so just to take a quick look back. This is the third year of a three-year cycle and um, in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, that was year one of the evaluation and we looked at related services, the organizational structure of the student services department and um, we reviewed and updated our procedural manual. Year two, in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year, we looked at our pace in lab, our subset trip programs district wide. And then this year we looked at our inclusion services and our inclusive practices. So I'm going to summarize key themes, important ideas and facts from the evaluation. And the evaluation was conducted by Sharon Soutcher and Wendy Prunier, educational consultants, who performed this evaluation for Littleton Public Schools. The evaluation focuses on the review of inclusive practices and services district wide during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so, as I said, this is part of a three-year evaluation plan um, that we met and developed prior to the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Um, and it also complies with the requirements of the special ed criterion fifty-six. Next slide. So the form of the presentation, I'll go over the process. I'll touch on the results. I'll go through some commendations, recommendations, and then some actual next steps that we have in place. So the evaluation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is specifically targets inclusion support district wide. And as I mentioned, this follows previous evaluations focusing on related services, the team chairperson roles, our policy and procedural manual and our substantially substantially separate programs. The evaluators engaged in a planning process with the district's special education administration, which included meetings to plan the the project and approved data collection instruments. Um, and in addition to multiple emails and phone calls, the evaluator has met um, a number of times with myself, the student services liaison, our special ed consultants and special education administrator and team chair people to plan for the evaluation project. The data collection, the data collection methods included staff interviews using specific guides for gen ed teachers, special ed inclusion teachers, principals and assistant principals and special ed administrators. Um, and educational support professional survey, classroom observations, as well as student record reviews, onsite visits and um, were were um, occurred for interviews and observation and those, those occurred during the month of December, two thousand and twenty-four across all of the schools. Okay, next slide. So staff responses indicated that the criteria for determining if inclusion is the appropriate service delivery method. Uh, those decisions are generally individualized and based on factors like test results, classroom performance, find more output, processing speed and independence. Uh, they did find that there was um, the decision to recommend those pullout services versus inclusion was individualized. Um, and so one of the, one of the results and the findings was that most staff at all levels responded, um, who responded to, to the interview schedule. The schedule did not allow for time to spend um, enough time in a general education classroom to monitor implementations. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more when I get to recommendations and next steps. Um, and that there also was a notable difference in perception that exists between the elementary and secondary levels that in general, staff at the elementary level felt that pullout services were the default and that and staff at the middle and high school level felt that inclusive services were the default when making decisions. Okay, next slide. So with regard to collaboration among staff, collaboration among staff, meaning between gen ed, special ed and educational support personnel. It occurs formally and informally and it occurs during school, before school, after school and sometimes during lunch casually, informally, informally. Um, that IEPs often include a team consultation and in addition, Google Docs are used for sharing input and and notes. General education teachers and educational support personnel are informed of IEP goals and accommodations through printed IEPs at some of the elementary schools, binders and or digital access at the middle and high school and also digitally at the other schools. The use of an um, IEP at a glance was also reported as being useful. Okay, so when we're looking at some of the feedback from the observation, uh, most staff reported that they would like to see special ed teachers spend more time in the general education classrooms to monitor IEP implementation and support inclusion. The prevailing model seems to be that special ed teachers provide most of the pullout services and educational support personnel provide most of the inclusion service on an IEP. Um, when supporting gen in classrooms. Some of the, the classroom observation feedback noted some positive observations that included evidence of UDL such as essential questions, vocabulary postings, choice and movement opportunities, a clear purpose for the adults in in most of the classrooms they observe, appropriate encouragement, active checks for understanding and good management skills. Some areas they identified for improvement were um, data collection and also making sure that every adult had a clear purpose. And this was noted, um, a recommendation noted specific to the middle school. Next slide. So for our record review, the uh, results identified a need to comprehensively respond to all N one questions for instance, question three, and that means um, it's a cover letter that that goes out to parents following an IEP meeting. And it goes through what the district is proposing. And that question number three, um, the question is what, what um, parts were rejected? And so sometimes there isn't anything kind of rejected and and the team is in in full agreement with the proposal. But um, Desi has noted that that is an opportunity for us to memorialize different discussions and different things that were discussed, even if ultimately there was a consensus. Um, they also noted that there um, is at times was not a direct match of verbiage from the goal focus area to the service delivery grid, which can cause confusion for parents. For example, a service listed on the grid could be inclusion support, but the goals listed in the IEP could be written language, written organization, written expression, reading, social emotional skills, functional academics, classroom functioning. And so um, making sure that the, the verbiage very um, closely aligns as much as possible was one of the recommendations. And um, they also noted that carrying over social skills and behavior goals into the gen ed setting. So one of the, for example, with this recommendation, there might be a social skill goals, a social skill goal, but the service is pullout, which really, i- if you're working on social skills, that should really be um, being delivered in an inclusive setting and maybe supported by a pullout piece of um, of service. Okay, so um, for commendations, the district was commended for its proactive approach to reviewing inclusionary practice and its commitment to continued improvement. Thoughtful reflection was evident in all interviews and the staff consistently expressed a desire for professional growth. The district's staff development around UDL is extremely commendable, particularly at the elementary level. Um, they noted that the assignment of ESPs for the majority of class periods at the middle and high school is a positive practice. It helps them understand um, content area that's being delivered, content instruction that's being delivered. Um, the special education department is fully staffed, which is um, definitely notable with a lot of districts struggling with um, filling positions these days. And that um, most teaching staff and educational support personnel have very positive and respectful working relationships. And the IEP at a glance was highlighted as a beneficial communication tool. Um, the new IEP lends itself to the development of an initiative to ensure that least restrictive environment is the default rather than pullout. And so using the new participation in the general education setting statement as a point of discussion prior to completing the service delivery grid will help provide a structure to accomplish this goal. Um, they did recommend less pullout service because that will allow for increased inclusion services. Um, they did note, as I discussed previously, matching the verbiage from the goal focus area more clearly to the service delivery grid. Um, provide staff, instructional staff at the high school and middle school, opportunities to observe classrooms that are um, modeling in very strong practices for UDL. Um, with the expectation of enhanced application and continue to foster relationships between special education and general education teachers to promote shared ownership of students. Additional recommendations included to increase collaboration between special ed teachers and ESPs to ensure fidelity in practice. Increase the capacity of special education teachers and general ed teachers in generalizing social behavior and pragmatic skills for proceedings through consultation and training. Monitoring the use of um, educational support personnel as building substitutes. Incorporate consistent data collection practices, provide additional training opportunities for educational support. provide additional training opportunities for educational support personnel, and emphasize that best practice is to consistently collect and utilize data and to emphasize least restrictive environment. Okay, so for, for to discuss our next steps, additional training for liaisons regarding least restrictive environment and, and meeting facilitation to that end. And so, scheduling for that is in the works. An increase to social behavior consultation and training for special ed staff. We did have the benefit of increasing our behavioral support by adding a third BCBA. So that has already been implemented and has had really positive feedback. And then increasing the training for ESPs, and that has already been, that is already in the works as well through the benefit of our two seventy-four, which is a program improvement grant. So we've utilized the grant funds for that. It's a one-time grant, but it, it comes out one time. It has come out one time every year for the past few years. It's not always guaranteed. It's not like an entitlement grant like IDEA, but we use the funds for this, with that grant this year to provide ESPs with a flexible opportunity for additional training. They also have an allocation in their contract in the amount of four hundred dollars, and we will continue to encourage ESPs to take advantage of that benefit. And then also in the contract, ESPs are able to participate in relevant district offerings. And then, in addition, based on a preliminary review, we've looked at some efficiencies that were identified to allow time in liaison schedules to accommodate additional time in the general ed setting to provide supervision, additional supervision to the ESPs, additional support to the general ed teachers. And, and we anticipate that we'll be able to accomplish this with intentional scheduling and thoughtful planning. In addition, we are going to review the data of how frequently ESPs are being utilized as substitutes. And one of the big changes, one of the big things that we're going to work on is utilizing something that's called the IEP icon in Aspen because right now, we're sharing IEPs in a variety of different ways, either through a shared Google folder or through binders or, or giving hard copies to the teachers. But using the IEP icon in Aspen will simplify access to IEPs, and it eliminates the need for those Google folders and the binders. So we'll be able to upload the IEPs directly to Aspen in a PDF format, which will link them to the IEP icon in the student's profile, which will give them instant access. And so, teachers and authorized staff will be able to access the most up-to-date IEPs by clicking on that icon, which will ensure like real-time updates. Once an IEP is, is signed, they'll, it will be uploaded as soon as we receive the signed IEP. And then there will be no kind of downtime in between getting it, scanning it, uploading it to a, a Google Drive. And it also, because Aspen has a, a role-based access, it ensures that only authorized users will be able to view those IEPs, which will help maintain privacy and will reduce the need to kind of shred out-of-date copies because they'll be overwritten once the new IEP is, is signed. And so, no more multiple versions, unlike the Google Drive or physical binders. And so, it's just a much more streamlined approach. So that is, that was it for the evaluation. If you have any questions?
You want my name joining us?
All things.
No problem. Thank you, Mark, and to catch most of that. Do you have any questions or?
I know.
No other spots. Stacy?
I do have a few questions. First, I want to say I really appreciate you guys doing this evaluation because it's so important to our district to actually kind of take a step back and take that time to like evaluate what's actually going on. So to appreciate that, especially after getting over the COVID, like we're kind of at a spot where we're kind of getting back into the groove. So it's a good time to do it. But the few questions I have, this isn't to pick it apart, it's just, it's honestly just curiosity questions. So this was an internal evaluation? It wasn't like a third-party evaluation?
It is a third-party, yes. We hire an outside third-party, and they do all of it. I, I help with the planning, the logistics, the scheduling, and then I step out of it. I'm not involved with the observations. I'm not involved with the interviews. They collect and summarize and analyze all of the data. They provide us with a slide deck that then we take and I, I pare down for all of the kind of broad strokes and the key.
That's great. You guys want to clarify that?
Yes. Yep.
And for the data collection, I may have missed it, but sort of like student interviews or parent interviews involved?
No, for this, this is looking at like a department. So, so what we are about to go into, what we're, what we're going into now is our tier-focused monitoring, our integrated through DESI, where that involves a, a parent survey that goes out. And so that comes in with that phase. This is a department, so we have interviews of staff, but students aren't interviewed for, for this.
For this, yes. So your first layer is just working with staff, and then second layer will be involving the parents. That's.
They're separate, though. So this is the, this is our, our three-year kind of in, internal using a, a third-party. And then the Department of Ed, we're doing civil rights, special ed, and OLA. That involves a parent survey, a parent meeting, and that's when they see that and put feedback from, from families.
Right. That's awesome. Yeah, it just kind of brings it full circle. Just get the rest. So get, get the others, you know, get the other side of it.
Yeah.
And then I think, so the, the one question that I really had, so I, the integration with, with all the students, that's obviously what we all want. So the participation in the general education setting. Do we have like guidelines for balancing kind of like that inclusion with students versus sometimes like a student just has to be taken out, right? Sometimes it can be disruptive to students that are just kind of like going along with, with the flow. So like, what's, what are those guidelines and balancing that? Like, we want them to be included, obviously. But how are we, how are you guys, you guys have criteria for that or?
So it's all, it, it is individualized for each individual student. And so, looking at the data and determining if the student is, is benefiting from, from that inclusion. And it is a continuum. So that's why we do have a range of programming that ranges from full, substantially separate. So we do have students that are fully out of the mainstream environment for the majority of the day. They might just be included for particular times, or it might even be that they're in for part of a morning meeting, building up their time, or they might be participating fully in a morning meeting in the sub-separate program to kids that are fully included all day long. And so, there are students who are part of our substantially separate programs, LAB and PACE, who, who are spending a lot of, a lot of their time outside of the general ed setting. And then there are students who are working in our inclusion with our inclusion teachers that still do. They might be pulled out for a, a specific content area because they have a math disability, and they might be included for the majority of the day. Or they might be, they might have social and behavioral goals, and they might be on grade level, but because they, you know, struggle with being able to apply their skills within the context of, of a larger environment, of, of a class of twenty kids, they might have pull-out for different times of, of the day because of that, or might be interspersed throughout the day. There are some kids that we have that might have fifteen or twenty-minute pull-out. Sometimes kids are pulled out for a half hour, forty-five minutes, or a full block. It's all dependent on, driven by the IEP, and it's a team decision. Yeah.
That, I mean, that all, that all makes sense. I think that's more like the, the social behavioral of, we have the kids that have IEPs for social behavioral, and then we have kids that aren't on IEPs, but are also like kind of bordering along, like you're still struggling with those social behavioral things. And I feel like those are the kids that kind of struggles sometimes if there's a little bit of distractions or anything. So I just want to make sure that there's some type of balance. We want, I want the kids integrated, absolutely. But to also just be aware of the kids that maybe don't have IEPs but are still kind of struggling with having some of those higher distractions, I think. Yeah.
Janine, your opportunity?
I have no questions. Thank you. But this was wonderful. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Janine.
My feedback would be, I think that this was very well done. Thank you and your team doing an excellent job with special ed programming in Littleton. Was there, so this is like now, okay, you've received the information now. I'm kind of trying to take care of it. Was there, what were the big takeaways for you? Was there anything that you were sort of surprised about? Like, what are the quick, quick places to get better?
So definitely the training. I love that we were able to use the two seventy-four grant to provide flexible opportunities for the ESPs who are asking for, for training. One of the challenges that we run into is that when we have early release days, some of them aren't able to stay for a particular day. So if we were able, if we were doing something district-wide, then we might not get all of the ESPs. So then some are missing, missing that. So being able to offer them self-paced modules that they can learn at their own pace, and they can complete at the times that maybe after the little ones go to bed, they can sit and do a self-paced module for an hour in the evening. That was a really great, that's a really great opportunity that we're looking, that we're hopeful and looking to continue to support going forward because it gives flexible training options for staff. And another, another one is something that we have already been working on is that making sure that our default is inclusion. And that we are, if there is a justification and a rationale for pulling out, that we really need to talk through that at the IEP team meetings before, before taking a child out of your general education classroom.
Sometimes that pull-out is just additional services for something that they might be struggling with, right?
Correct. Yeah.
So they're having a really hard time with X, Y, Z concepts, and they get the inclusion and they get the pull-out. But the issue is, what did they miss when they got pulled out, right? What's, what curriculum did they miss?
Right.
Who was responsible for sort of shifting that cultural initiative at the two lower schools to say, before, before we pull out, let's sit down and reevaluate this? And how do we bring the special education teachers more into the classroom versus the pull-out services? Does that become your responsibility or?
Part of the team. So mine and the special ed administrator. So Mike Jarvis and Ellie Gilman are really facilitating those conversations at their, their regular department meetings. They work with the building administrators on master scheduling so that it allows those efficiencies to be found, for sure. But we've been having those conversations. We continue to have them where we've made, we've made significant gains in that area. There's more room for, for growth in that area, for sure.
There was some sort of, I think it was a recommendation about consistent.
Verbiage.
Uh, consistent data points.
Data collection.
Data collection. So.
So a lot of the data collection.
A little bit, right? Because the, the sort of, there's, there's the general ed gets coupled this, consistent data collection observations. And then I would think that students who are being referred for additional services, whether or not it's inclusion or exclusion, there's probably some sort of constant monitoring that's taking place to see what we're doing, what we're doing, working, if we need more, and we don't just wait for the, you know, IEP review.
There's tons of data being collected. I think what they were trying to emphasize is, is really that generalization data collection. Like, if there's data collection during those pull-out times, we need to be making sure that those skills are being generalized and when, when they're being demonstrated in the Gen Ed classroom too. So making sure that ESPs know how to collect data on those goals in the Gen Ed setting and throughout the day. And, and using more fluid data collection methods beyond just curriculum-based measures, looking at the behavior and social, and having the BCBA's and the adjustment council and speech pathologists all doing that consultation and work, I think will help us with that as well.
What's your opinion on the use of ESPs for substitutes? Because I know that, you know, the ESP is, is, is there, they're in the building, and then all of a sudden absenteeism comes in from the staff, and it's like, okay, we need a body. So what's the fix? But how frequently are we needing to pull someone off with their ESP role and then move them someplace else? Is that has a, I don't know if it's a trickle-down effect or a trickle-up effect for the, for the students that they're supposed to be working with?
Yeah, we certainly don't have extra ESPs floating around. That, that's for sure. That being said, we do have more minutes of ESP time than are reflected in IEPs overall. It's just really looking at how to be able to minimize that when we need to maximize the utilization of subs. So there are times that sometimes ESP will cover one block or one class versus a whole day. So that's been, that's been very helpful. So looking at who is able to be pulled. But we need to take a look at that and make sure that we're, we're minimizing it and utilizing ESPs that is not drawing from inclusion time.
Okay, so oftentimes when those ESPs are being pulled into substitute, it's because a staff member's missing a portion of their day because they might be doing a team meeting, or they might, they themselves might be in an IEP meeting or something else. It's not like an absence for the entire day.
Yeah, it's not as, so it's, it's much more rare that an ESP is being pulled to be a full sub for a, a whole day. It could be, you know, meeting coverage for a particular class. For some of the, some of the, the building administrators, they do quite an intricate dance to try to piece together coverage without overly drawing on the, the ESPs. But it's something we need to look at so we can get a sense of the, that, the date into that frequency.
There are two, there are two things here. There, there's, are ESPs that are used at times to cover classes through, or for IEP meetings. And then when it comes to teacher absenteeism, our expectation is that you only use an ESP if you can't find a sub.
For instance, like Mr. Levangi was, was an AP teacher yesterday. He's a great math teacher. So we'll do, we'll do things like that for coverage before.
And the S and IEP icon sounds like a great idea, right?
Sure does. And I have to commend Margaret Deslitz for bringing, bringing that to, she's been working with, with Natalie Frodo to get that set up. And so, it'll be a summer project for us to do that initial kind of scan in and, and upload. And then, but once we do that, it's just then overriding and replacing as IEPs are signed, just, you know, uploading with the newly signed IEP.
Yeah, great review. I hope you folks are able to make good use of it. Try to get better. That's the name of the game.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to what the next three-year cycle's gonna, gonna look like for our, about.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. You know, while you're, somebody decided to skip over the presentation number three. So we're moving on to our fourth presentation, which is typically a very brief financial update from business manager Steve Martin.
Very brief. Except the, there it is. Worrying or check? I mean, I mean, we, we have no budget concerns. We have sufficient funds to balance out the end of the year, pay all of our bills, meet all of our salary obligations, out-of-district tuition obligations. There's no real concerns. It's minor, and we have the money in the budget. We are, we, we have been hit with a couple of unanticipated expenses that are pretty large. The dishwasher at the high school stopped working, and we, we've had it evaluated by electricians and plumbers and everything else, and it's beyond repair. So we have to replace that. That's going to be probably in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range. We're still working on quotes on that. We have a hot water heater at the high school that needs to be repaired. It didn't pass the insurance inspection because it has a minor water leak, but we have to get that fixed. And that's about a twenty-five thousand dollar repair. To replace a hot water heater, to put it in context, it's about eighty thousand dollars. So it's still cheaper to repair it. So we are managing and working through those, that process as well. But we have sufficient efficiencies in the budget to be able to cover those costs. So we're in good shape. So, but while I have the floor, I would also like to say we're six weeks ahead of where we normally do, but bus registration is now open. Yay. So what we are asking is parents, look, we're asking parents to go register their students for the bus for next year. Don't wait until the week before school to come in and, uh, next year and, and try to get on a bus because the bus routes are already developed. It's very difficult to add students onto the bus a week or a couple of days before school because their routes are developed. And we can't just shift the bus to a new street. If we have them signed up at the beginning, we can make the routes with those addresses included. So this is six weeks additional time. It's, it's open now. It'll run through June twenty-sixth. So this should be plenty of time. We will put this out on our, our communication app as well. So bus registration is open. It's out there. The link is on the webpage. There's a link to a letter you can read, and there's a link to the registration page. So please, families, go register your students for next year for the bus. So.
Did you put it on school now?
Yeah, we're going to do it on school now. Yep, we're, I haven't done it yet, but we're going to do that probably next week or something. So. Yeah, so again, we're six, we, we normally don't open that up until mid-May. So we're trying to allow families more time to register. I know there's fees involved and things like that. So anyway, thank you very much.
These are due at the time of application.
Yes, they are.
Is that extra time because you are getting stragglers or is that extra time just because it happens to be?
Just extra time because we made a conservative, concerted effort to try to get that process. get that process started a little sooner than we normally do to allow families more time before the end of school. They all go away for the summer.
Right.
They forget, you know, um, we get so many comments a week before school. Well, I meant to do it before school and I, we left for the summer and so. This is, it's open now through the end of June. So that's a long time to have the process open. So should be hopefully no excuse for parents to go in and register. And, and honestly, we'd rather have parents register for their bus. If they, if they decide they're not going to take the bus later, we'll refund them money. That's not an issue. But at least if they register, we don't have to then mess around trying to redo a bus route a week before school. That doesn't go well. So it doesn't go well with us, doesn't go well with the bus company. It's a real headache to try to re-alter bus routes for different streets and things like that where if they register now, we make those routes with though, and then if they drop it, that's not a big deal. So, yeah.
You just want to capitalize on, uh, tax refund season. Spend it on your bus.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
I think you thought of that. You should, you should report to us in percentages going forward as to how many, how many folks are registered. We're at like fifty percent.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can, we can give you the numbers as we go.
Yeah, I think if you also just kind of like, if you can somehow connect it to when report cards go out or something like that's like when your kind of parents are kind of doing that like administrative school stuff. It might be a good like checklist, uh, all right, where you.
Oh, it's called the project reports they have registered for us.
Well, we're gonna put it on, we're gonna put it out on school now, which is on the communication platform.
Yeah.
Uh, we ask, we always ask the principals to put it out in their weekly newsletters, uh, in, in a blurb, you know, on those newsletters. Um, with the link to the webpage. Um, so we do as much as we can to, um, put the word out to all families. So.
Use our electronic signage boards.
Uh, that's ordered, that's ordered and it should come in, uh, at the middle school.
Great. Still working on it.
Yep. It's, it's ordered.
End of June. How's that?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Got one item in your business this evening, which is the Shaker Lane Transitional Update. Principal Kane and Superintendent Clenchey will discuss the rationale of the, um, reassignment of the transitional program to a kindergarten classroom effective of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
No screening.
Before you, uh, before you begin, I just want to say that the transitional conversation has been happening, uh, behind the scenes for a couple of years now. It's one of the things that constantly gets evaluated year after year. Personally, I had a couple of people reach out to me that, that were kind of surprised by it. Um, some, you know, some residents that have some young kids or some people that have, you know, maybe they, um, had lived in town their entire life and they're like, we've had this program for thirty years. What's? Some folks thought it was, um, budgetary concerns. So I, I was able to have a couple of conversations with folks that expressed um, concern and thought it would be worthwhile for us to just make it part of the agenda so that anyone that was listening or wanted to hear directly from our ears, uh, from our mouth. Um, and I just give them the scoop on it. So without further ado.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, thanks for having me and, uh, Dr. Clutchy speak on this tonight. Uh, hopefully you and the townspeople have had a chance to read the letter that was in the packet. Um, it does outline some information. I just want to back up just a little bit. Um, before I address the letter. So this program has been here for thirty-five years. This is not something that, um, we took lightly. I took lightly. It's something I've thought about for years. Um, I came from a prior district that also had a program similar to this. They did lose their program due to funding and that position was reallocated across the district, not even as, you know, we were able to absorb it into our school to help our youngest learners and not have it taken away from us. Um, so it's a program that I think served its purpose for many, many years. And as times change, things change, we need to change and reevaluate it. So, um, I, I'm going to go back and forth. I, I want to talk a little bit about the reason why we, why we decided to change. Um, of course, this year with the transitional program. So over the past eight years that I've been at Shaker Lane, you know, I've looked at the number of students recommended for the program. And the students recommended for the program have ranged from anywhere from nineteen students to twenty-eight students that the kindergarten teachers would say, these are the students who want to, um, go for the transition, transitional program. We'd have some interviews, um, talk with families. And then within those nineteen to twenty-eight class sizes, they would end up in a range of twelve to eighteen students in that class. So we have nineteen to twenty-eight recommended, twelve to eighteen ending up, which equates to about eight to ten families declining the program each year for the past eight years. Um, and there are always families that decline the program and these children move on and we support them. We support them through groups. We support them through the S S T process. Um, we support them with different counseling, um, groups. This year, um, the kindergarten staff recommended thirteen students. It's probably one of the lowest recommendations I've had in eight years. And if we look at those numbers and having four to five families decline the program, which would be parallel to the eight to ten families over the past seven years, eight years, that would result in eight to nine students in that classroom. And when, you know, this, the meeting with the kindergarten teachers fell right on the heels of, uh, the superintendent asking for the budget meetings with us. So during this time, I said, you know, here's what I'm presented with. We have thirteen students recommended for the program. If issue repeats itself and four to five families say no, we have eight to nine students. Is this the best way that we can allocate resources? Can we think of something different? So I did talk with Superintendent Clenchey, Beth Steele, um, and we said, you know, is it a possibility that we could absorb this another way? And then we, I started to think about what have we done for the students? Why is this happening? You know, is it just where we are in life? Are we providing different supports? And that's where the list from the letter came up. And I started to think about, well, why are these numbers going down? Why is it this year? You know, we are coming out COVID, we're bouncing back. Um, you know, the social emotional learning curriculum, I don't think that was in place thirty-five years ago, the S E L program we have. We have also, um, not listed on here, you know, our school adjustment council, when I came to Littleton, I introduced the, um, social skills program. And, um, social, sorry, social thinking program. And that is something that I worked way back with, um, uh, Justina, a former school counselor that was here to go into classrooms for the first six weeks of school and teach students specifically classes, um, personal space, um, uh, thought bubbles. There's different skills. So there's six lessons over six weeks that are taught. So we have that. We have the second step curriculum. We have lunch groups, snack groups, um, full day kindergarten. You know, I was there for that transition. It was fantastic. That did not exist thirty-five years ago. We've added a school psychologist, full-time school psychologist. I think that was my first year here back in twenty seventeen. We have a school adjustment counselor that replaced our school council. That is a higher degree, a higher level of, um, training and expertise to work with our students. Um, we also have B C B A full-time. That came on somewhere in the past eight years. Uh, the universal design for learning approach that we started in twenty twenty-one, really leveling the playing field for all kids, what is good teaching practice. And then three years ago, we started the what I need block. So when, when I sat down and I sat down with the assistant principal, Raka Deacon, and I sat down with Dr. Clenchey and Beth Steele, I said, is this the year? Is this the year where we can keep this position, move it to another location that would help students? Um, is, is this our time? And I do admit it was quick. It was pretty quick because, um, this all happened at the beginning of March. Uh, the budget meeting was shortly after. Conferences with families was two weeks later, which, where we typically tell families that, you know, we're considering transitional for your child, we're recommending it. So I sat down with the kindergarten team, um, before, before, um, conferences. And kind of laid it all out. And this is, this is, this is where we're going to go with the program. Um, you know, so the, what we have decided at this time is to add a seventh kindergarten teacher, uh, which will help reduce class sizes. Um, enabling teachers to better focus on addressing the growth areas of growth. That also coupled with very, very cognizant this year of supporting our first graders. Because we also need to absorb the current thirteen students in transitional, coming up with all of our kindergarten students. Um, so this year, our, we have about twenty, twenty to twenty-one students in the classroom. Next year, it would be twenty-one, twenty-two. So it's not a sort of large change, but we are putting thirteen students in the transitional program in with all of our lessons that would have been recommended. So while we can't expedite student development, we can certainly provide support in a classroom built with diverse learners. Build with constructive peer influences. Um, it is a homogeneous group in the transitional program. So now we're giving them a more diverse opportunity to be in the first grade classroom. So in a nutshell, um, you know, that is where we are at. Lots of conversations are happening, um, to this, you know, to today. Meeting with Anna Diaco, our school adjustment counselor. What are we going to put in place for these first graders? How are we going to support them? Um, also have a, a meeting coming up with the first grade teachers, uh, next month, once Anna and I have a set plan of ideas to sit with them. What are you thinking of? Um, so it's, it's still being worked on. It's not perfect. But I think it's the best scenario that we can do right now. And I'm very grateful that we are allowed to keep the position and that we're not losing this due to budget cuts that I know happened in neighboring district. Dr. Clinchey, if you want to add anything to that?
Uh, a few things. We've been looking at this program for a number of years. Back my first year here, I did an evaluation of that program, talked to parents and and satisfaction of the, the program was definitely higher in the elementary grades. And they hit middle school, it seemed to drop off for, for a number of obvious reasons, peer builds, one major one. And it turned into about a fifty-fifty split. So I watched the program very closely over the years that I've been here and we've had a lot of teacher turnover in that program. My opinion, there was never a real solid, unique curriculum for transition program. Uh, it was still effective and it was effective in its day, but all the supports that we put in to Shaker Lane School, there, there is no reason why we need to homogeneously group students. The research is very clear. If you're going to work on skill sets with students, they need to be with peers that have acquired those skill sets. So in essence, what we've been doing for a number of years is taking thirteen, eighteen students, putting them in a, a classroom, all of them, uh, you know, yearning for more social skill development. My belief as a, as a superintendent is that putting students in a, in a heterogeneous setting where they have peers that, that are, are behaving differently and maybe more mature. But each group could know about something that occurs. It is a, a, a better way of dealing with the situation. When this program was first integrated, obviously I wasn't here. I was in education at the time and, uh, transition was just a buzzword for retention. And I think it's a parent, it's a violent parent. So I had a child that age back then, uh, transition was a much softer term than, than retention. And I think that in part is a driving force for longevity of that program. We're in a much better spot. One of the impediments of, of making this transition was creating a bubble class in grade one. Justin and I had those conversations, uh, a couple of years ago. So if we didn't have the right population in, in kindergarten and, uh, for the right number of students in transition, we would have had to hire another teacher for each successive grade line until middle school and probably until grade seven, when we have a, an opportunity where students, uh, will choose a private school and going from grade six to seven. So when we looked at the numbers in the spring, it, it, it was obvious to, to all of us is we can do it this year without adding a teacher. Keep our class sizes at a point where, where we're, we're happy with those class sizes. Our kindergarten teachers, uh, are going to have another, another classroom and we still have E S Ps in those classrooms. And in kindergarten, kindergarten is the only, uh, area in public education Massachusetts that actually talks about class size. Well, they have a, a twenty-five to one, uh, ratio without an assist. If you go over twenty-five students, you've added an assist. But we've had assist systems for many, many years. So we are well, well-staffed and, and we have tried and true research-based programs. We have clinical support. Uh, we have an adjustment counselor. There's a huge difference from a, a general counselor. So we're, we're ready for this and we're excited to do this. And it is time. I think it's, it's, uh, and it's not, it's not being done just because it's the right time. This is the right thing to do for our youngest learners. There is no need to put them in a whole G E S program at this point. So.
So it's, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but just to follow the math, it was going to be thirteen, you know, thirteen recommendations from that. A couple of students likely that wasn't for them. And then of course, someone always does have, like suppose the opportunity to repeat kindergarten. If they were really early birthday, right? Early birthday, like on the cusp. And they, they felt, um, that it would be beneficial to do another year kindergarten. They, they retain that, right?
Absolutely. While there isn't a lot of evidence that supports retention, there are definitely case by case
Yeah.
situations where we, I've had those conversations.
Case by case.
Very, yeah. Absolutely.
And your, your point about the data not necessarily supporting retention is sort of another reason to eliminate the transitional program, put them in that heterogeneous population so that there can be some modeling behavior for students that are more mature. I'm curious if, I would have assumed that we were, we have six kindergarten classes. We have six first grade classes.
Yes.
And one transitional. I would have explored a, a seventh first grade teacher as an option. I just was curious. And then you go back to six and I was just curious if you folks gave that any thought or why did you choose a seven kindergarten teacher? That's, you're going to have less kids there. Did you give that any consideration to have smaller class sizes in first grade?
We, we did. We, we, what we really focused on is the, the variance in cognitive levels of kindergarten students versus first grade students.
But that doesn't change, right? Cause every year you've got.
Well, it, it does because they, they mature, they grow.
Yeah.
And, and we, we really felt that, that first introduction to school is, is so important. And, and that's where we wanted to put our investment at this point in time. And that's, you know, that's how we made that decision. I mean, we, we watch our students closely as they, they progress through each of our schools, but in Shaker Lane in particular, from going to kindergarten to grade one and grade two, it, it's, it's, it's fascinating to, to watch how they, they develop from those grades. It's a huge cognitive, social, emotional development kindergarten to grade two. So we, we are still, you know, putting in our, in my opinion, Coach Shell's opinion as well. We're putting in extra support to take care of those needs when they first come to students, to school. And you have to remember, not all parents send your children to kindergarten, but that creates a, a greater threat. At times, maybe sometimes it doesn't, but there's a chance that, you know, what skill sets those students are coming into kindergarten with, most of the time, for you, all the time, very much greater than, 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 than various we have at grade one.
So we did have that conversation. We did. Um, just so I understand your thinking. So you are thinking, you know, why wasn't it considered maybe first grade for this coming year? And then kindergarten for the following year?
Would always stay in first grade.
Just stay in first grade.
So you've got sixteen kids in kindergarten, seventeen just first grade, sixty, yeah. So they get that one year where it's like, well, let's say class sizes are twenty-two and then class sizes become nineteen or eighteen. And then class sizes go back to twenty-two. What's the, what's the enrollment for kindergarten? I'm sorry, you won't know that. What's the enrollment for first grade next year?
Uh, so first grade, if we.
Just like the kindergarten plus transitional.
You know, if you take, if you take twenty-two and multiply it by six. Cause they're, they're averaging, yeah, they're averaging with low, low kindergarten classes, people low transitional.
In kindergarten right now and what's the transitional class like?
Thirteen.
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 So one nineteen kindergarten and thirteen in transitional. So that'll become a class size of one thirty-two.
Great.
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 Yeah. That's what I meant.
Yeah.
The entire class, like the class of twenty twenty-five.
What's our average kindergarten class size? I know grade levels can vary up to twenty students, which is a whole class.
I don't have it on me right now. Did you say you have it already? Cause I, I know I have it on my computer. I'd want to save it right, twenty?
Roughly right now. And so a seventh classroom would lower that even more. I think that's.
Around seven to eighteen.
As, like, just from my early childhood education background, kindergarten is the year that you have the lowest class size as possible. So I hundred percent agree with that resource in, and I understand your thinking of like, why not first grade? But doing that in kindergarten actually benefits them in first grade. It's a ripple effect there. It benefits them all the way to sixth and twelfth grade, if you ask me. But I, I think how you sort of outlined the reasoning makes a lot of sense. It, it was like, cause I've heard so highly about the transitional burden since I've come to Littleton. What? This was everyone's, you know, favorite thing. But then when I saw, you know, you sort of illustrated, it seemed like it was a. But then when I saw, you know, you sort of illustrated, it seemed like it was a very thoughtful decision, maybe after a lot of. Discussion and different elements. I do think, and you brought this up, this current kindergarten year, including the transition going into first grade is where. You'll probably want to put additional resources.
And that's why I think I misunderstood you. I thought that's why you had said, how about first grade for this coming year and then kindergarten the following year, which is not something I thought of. But um.
Me neither.
Yeah.
Question to that, for me, of, you know, if you have a very small incoming kindergarten class and a very large first grade class, could that be a.
Our, our kindergarten enrollment is pretty. Pretty stable. It's not increasing. And I've been, you know, we've been accepting five school choice students in kindergarten the last. Ten years. So it's not as if I would never have an opportunity to accept ten because we had a low enrollment. And there was never a time where we didn't uh. We weren't able to accept any school choices in kindergarten. So now things will change with time. Right now it's. At times it's surprising that, that we have to see some kind of shift.
So that's just. For curiosity. So the seven kindergarten classroom next year. Will be housed in that first grade way.
We have not gotten that far. Mr. McCarthy. That is the next, if you want, I can come um.
What are you gonna tell you right now? We're saving for big schools, so we can't.
Right, right. No, I mean, there's definitely been some thought of keeping like, you know, a, a model of four and three. Four Ks together, three Ks together, some shifting.
I know you guys like to move around in that building, so.
That happened a lot last year, trying to minimize that for the next three years, hopefully.
Don't know what room to go to.
But that is something, I, I definitely don't want that kindergarten teacher out there on their own because I feel like that is what has happened to that transitional teacher. Is kind of on their own island. So I want that person um to be part of a group.
Four and three sounds good.
Did you get any surprise reactions from any kindergarten families who maybe expected their child to go into transitional without even being recommended?
I did get um, one email from a current family that said they were looking for this, you know, can we talk about this? So I said absolutely. And then I got an email. So I got two emails. And then I got another email from um, a parent who had both of her children go through. The program and said it was very beneficial. There's no success because of this. And she sat to see a call.
I think that's probably the one thing that I wanted to note. And you, like, you know, said, like, in your letter, you. Outlines the logic behind the decision and it makes so much sense. But it was, I think, surprising to me as a school committee member, and I think to the community, that's something that has been a part of our district. And has really, really been a staple in our district. It wasn't anything that was brought to the table before that decision was made. Um, because I think, you know, we, we, we've always given you like really good support on these decisions and the decision totally, totally makes sense. And I understand that the turnover for making that decision came. Crapped up really fast on you and I understand why you had to make that decision, but I think it was important for you to be able to present it. Here and now, just to kind of talk it out because. Has been a part of our districts, staple in our districts. It's no longer going to be a part of it. Um, so I would love for you to treat it as kind of an experiments too, like to figure out. You know, we're going to have an extra kindergarten class this year, about, you know, continue to evaluate it and get staff's input on like. How it is working. Do they? Do they think it's really benefiting from having transitional or are they transitioning just fine when we have kind of smaller classrooms or whatever it is? I would hate to see it completely dissolve and us just kind of go to a standard structure when we know that community members can really benefit. And kids have really benefited it from it in the past. Um. So. I think that's probably just like. One thing was, it was surprising that it wasn't something that was talked about before, but it makes, it makes sense. So just a try.
I mean, we were, we were a bit surprised too. In December, we, we were still. Working on mindset, mind shift changes. And then until we had an idea of how many students uh. Were being recommended for transition. Then we had that information that we needed to make a shift. Personally, I didn't want to make that shift. If I was going to have to add a teacher to grade one, then grade two, and then grade three. It, it, it's, it's just, it, it's not, it's not a good way to do business. So the planets had to be aligned, you know, I pray, and it, it just fell into place very quickly. And, and I, I do appreciate what you're saying. We've had this conversation around the table and prior to. Most of you being here and, and sometimes uh. You know, you get uh. We need to be, we are conscious of it, but if, if we could have given you more head uh, more uh. Time in advance, we would have. I mean, we were scrambling to try to make this number work, pretty sure that we're, we weren't going to move forward and then, and then regret it. We had to make sure that, that we were going to do this. I really believe with the supports that we have in place, with the U D L that we have in place, uh, that's really. Become part of who we are. It, it will make the difference. We're looking forward to not need a program like that. And again, educationally, as an elementary principal twenty years ago, I would have had a hard time creating that program with my philosophy. Everybody has to do it. Bosses. It needs to be based on research. So we feel good about it. Uh, we know for some of our community members, it's. Hard for them to. To uh grasp, but hopefully in a year down the road, everybody's going to look back and say, you know what? That was a great decision. And we will be revealed. Yeah, but I appreciate the same.
Do you think there's a, there's a flip side to everything? Where I know, like you said, there was a time for this, there was a need for this, there's been a lot of meetings that have been met. I do think this year, you know, and I know you still do the kindergarten. I think those small class sizes are really something to share. It's unique, it's hard to do in this day and age with budget and so important. At that, like you said, it's their, their first time, for many of them, their first time in a setting. But certainly in Shaker Lane or in Littleton Public Schools. And so I think that's something to share with parents and that is stuff that.
I would hint the kindergarten teams. Like, right? I mean. Less, less students in the classroom, more individualized construction. Parents and better for, you know, create general population better for first grade and then it, then the first grade team site because there were smaller class sizes the year before.
That really didn't happen. Had those discussions and there was a bit of a, a grieving process. But they're in a good spot.
I uh, I know change is hard, right? I applaud the, the speed at which you folks moved with the decision. And obviously like the rationales all in the letter. I thought you did a nice job with it. I, I know we all want to be in the know, but if we were in the net, first of all, this isn't school committee decision. We operate at ten thousand feet. And if you guys brought us everything you were thinking about, we need to meet every day. So. Job well done.
Okay, yes. One question on, so did you get any input um, from the first grade teachers? Cause they're going to be the ones that are going to be absorbing this one to three students that maybe would have probably have gone to this transitional. Did you? Get input? Like, did you get support from them?
Um, so it was hard for them to hear. Um, but we're, we're gonna, we have a plan to move on. We're meeting next month. I asked them to think of ideas. I'm going to also think of ideas. I've already met with Anna Diaco, our school adjustment counselor. How we can support the social, emotional needs of these students in first grade. We have a couple of plans in place. I wanted each camps to, each of the camps to kind of think of it and then we're going to come together and stand together. And it's going to be a process. It's a systemic change. It's not just a K one change. It's a systemic change. And the systems that Anna and I have been talking about will affect all K two students to really prioritize our first grade students. Um, so yes, but um, I just needed them to kind of ha- have some time to process this because it was.
Cause it's a big, it's a big change for them. I understand, like, do you have an extra kindergarten teacher, but the first grade teachers are the ones that are going to be feeling that impact with larger classes. And with also some students that maybe feel, might, might be a little bit more challenging or just something that I still. So I think that's just super, super important to make sure that they are a, a part of that. Process of integrating this new system into the school. Um, plus it is going to be different. None of the teachers have been used to that.
But the, the actual increase in class size, you know, it's one of the reasons. Great, great one classes, larger than. So this is a, oh my god, my goodness, we, we have two more kids. Every year that, whenever. Students in a, in a classroom shift by plus or minus three. So we're, we're all of a sudden giving them eight more students. So that, that, we took that into consideration well. I mean, if we would have been pushing our class sizes up to twenty-six, we would have felt hesitant to take it forward. If we're going to do that, then are we prepared as a district, starting out even a teacher per grade?
This year, the first grade classes are twenty and twenty-one. Next year, they will be twenty-one, twenty-two. So some. There will be one or two students. And again, this is where it was like, is this the year? Is this the year where we can add? We can keep the teacher, we can add an E S P. Um, the numbers aligned. It was quick, agreed. Um, but it's, the numbers aren't a huge effect to be like five or six kids.
So this year was thirteen kids were recommended. How many kids were recommended last year?
Uh, last year, there were twenty-three students. Reckon twenty, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three students recommended and thirteen said yes. So ten families said no.
Twenty-three, ten said no. And then this year it was.
This year, there were thirteen recommended and we, we didn't get to.
There's a ten student difference between last year and this year of just recommendations. Right? Which is huge. But we also know that every class is.
Again, just over the years, like when you really look at the numbers over the years, these are the recommendations. Twenty-two, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-three, twenty-three. Thirteen.
The twenty-eight was COVID.
So twenty-eight was the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I know, I found interesting too.
But you know, the question is.
Absolutely.
But when you look at those now.
Those kids weren't in preschools, they weren't in nurseries, they weren't in daycare.
So there's the three-year gap. To get into, yeah, or two-year gap.
Which really kind of reinforce, reinforce the point. Twenty-three students or a hundred and twenty students is a lot. Yeah, but still to, to take those twenty-three students and put them in a classroom together, a homogeneous group. Um. To me, as a, as an educator, that's not the best thing to do most of the time. They're at that young age where they, they learn through play. And if you're isolating them for six hours a day without, you know, community peers that, that may have uh, you know, developed stronger social and emotional skills. I, I think inadvertently for some of those, those children, we, we may have not seen them progress as quickly as they could have. I mean, there's so many things.
There's just the staff support for that, that, right? I mean, it's, we're, we're supporting the kids and integrating them. So it's just giving the staff that extra support to be able to facilitate. The needs if they have extra needs. So I commend the, the logic behind it. I appreciate guys doing that. Last decision, so I appreciate you guys.
If we ever rip the bounty off again, we'll try to do it slower.
I mean, it's your decision to make.
Yes, it's totally your.
Jean, I recognize you're at home and I don't want, or you're not home, you're virtual. I don't want to leave you out, but at the same time, I do want to move on. So are you? You good? I don't think you're good. All right, um. There are second opportunity for interested citizens. Anyone on Zoom? Everyone's seeing them. We'll move on and we'll roll through our subcommittee reports rather quickly so we can. Wrap up P M B C.
I don't have any updates for P M B C or Shaker Lane or O. Kelly, do you have anything for?
I, no, I don't. Things are. I'm going to knock on, this one. You know, have been. Pretty good. We, we haven't been frantic in terms of anything that the M S B A. We're having thoughtful discussions about designing the school. What kind of uh. Furniture, uh, millwork. Figuration of the neighborhoods and where. You know, we're still having those discussions. I'm, I'm really excited when we get to that point in time where we can start having conversations in public. Of what we've created. M S B A did see a. A very rough makeup of the neighborhoods and they were really excited. In fact, one of the architects was at a. State meeting the other day and one of the members of the M S B A team came up to them just to talk about the Shaker Lane end plan. And the preliminary. Scam adding. And, and that feedback is really, really good because that usually doesn't happen. It was kind of sad. So. We're uh. We're excited and uh, you know, it's still. Still a lot of work to be done and, and uh. For, for me, I'm, I'm just anxious to get some pricing. To be honest with you. I wish we could fast forward this to get some accurate pricing so that we can have some.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, budgets subcommittee doesn't have any report this meeting. Policies subcommittee, no report. C P A has an update.
You know, it's shaping up to be an exciting spring for C P A. Um, they had a parent meeting at the Tackle last week. It was a great success. There were new faces and wonderful conversations. Um, there's a couple upcoming meetings on Tuesday, April first at seven o'clock in the Murray conference room at the library. This will be a business meeting and elections will be held. And um, C P A is looking for parents interested in becoming involved and will be looking to fill following positions. Chairperson, treasurer, secretary, and liaisons for schools. And they encourage parents to join for that meeting. And then in addition, we're very excited that on Tuesday, May sixth at seven P M at the Littleton Fire Station. This is going to be a wonderful event titled From Struggles to Success Insights from Young Adults. So we'll be learning about the transitional program from Littleton educators and also hearing personal stories and insights from students during a moderated panel discussion. And this event will be open to parents, educators, and community members and um, we hope you can join us.
There are no other subcommittee reports for this is for the school committee. I'll ask for my community to adjourn. Motion made by Vino. Backed in by Stacy. It's the roll call vote. We have a virtual attendant. Uh, Vino? Stacy?
Yes.
Janine?
Janine, aye.
Thank you. And Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. We have adjourned. Thank you.